We'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. And if we could keep in mind the family of David Jubert. David Jubert passed away. He was Eric Jubert's father and Mary Beth Carter's boss at one point. And of course, he owned Jubert's. If we could just keep them in our thoughts and prayers, please. This meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? A motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Public forum? Is there anyone here who would like to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda? Okay, I would like Mary Beth to make an introduction.
Yes, I would like to introduce Joanne Golden, our new recording secretary for the Board of Selectmen. Tonight is her first meeting.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is a public meeting with respect to the application of Gold Star Treasures Antique Mall, Christopher Alden, for a junk dealer's license on the premises located at 356A South Avenue. Approval of license should be subject to receipt of the license fee and final inspection approval by the building commissioner and fire chief. Is there anyone here that wants to speak about that? Okay, actually, I don't see any public members here, anyway. We need to go into, before we vote on it, we need to go into an executive session, however, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints of charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And seven, to, the exception seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And it deals with Gold Star Treasures. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Voice vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're in executive session. And we will come back into open session to finish the hearing, the public hearing for Gold Star Treasures.
That is Gavin. There you go.
Okay, we're back in open session. And we're back at the public hearing with respect to the application of Gold Star Treasures Antiques Mall, Christopher Alden proprietor, for a junk dealer's license. Is there a motion to approve the license?
I'll make that motion to approve his license.
Second.
Second. Anyone have any questions or discussion?
Okay.
All, that doesn't have to be, but all those in favor?
All right.
Good luck.
Good luck. Yes, I know. You too.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, we need to go into executive session again. We're going to go into two executive sessions. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Section, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct collective bargaining sessions with Mass Cop. And then, right after that, we'll go into an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Mass Cop if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. So is there a motion to go into executive session again?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Hey, we are now in executive session again.
We have to sign that guy's license. We're going to sign that guy's license? Are we going to wait? Was there?
Okay, we're back in open sessions. First order of business after we come out of executive session is to vote about a memorandum of agreement we have with the police union that deals with how we deal with shifts. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion that we.
That we accept a memorandum?
Accept a, yeah.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, then, is the.
Public hearing.
That we haven't come back, the public hearing that we had with Gold Star Treasure.
We thought we didn't.
We have an order on that, haven't we?
Yeah, we did.
Did we do? My mistake. Executive sessions can drive me crazy. Okay, first item on the agenda, then, after the, we did, we just did, is the Plymouth County Commissioners are here to make a presentation.
Hi, Jared.
Dan, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the membership. Commissioner Jared Valenzola, it's a pleasure to be here in Whitman again this evening. I'm joined by State Senator Mike Brady and State Representative Allison Sullivan Almeida and future Representative Alina Almeida. And really, it's a pleasure to join you this evening. We have what will be, for the moment, the final check presentation of the town of Whitman. We really want to just thank Mary Beth Carter and her team for working hard and diligently to secure these funds. I believe you are the fourth town to now reach your allocation cap. That's not to say there won't be more, depending on what other communities do, but for now, you are the fourth town to cross the finish line in terms of using all these funds. So I know I've said in previous presentations, one of our goals as a county was to ensure that none of these dollars returned to Washington, DC. Treasurer O'Brien especially wanted me to point out Mary Beth and the entire team here for the hard work they've done in securing these funds diligently and making sure they get used. Of course, we were here just about a month ago with 2.2 million in, I believe, those water sewer projects. And now, this evening, a new ambulance. So I do send the regrets of Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Hanley, as well as Treasurer O'Brien. They had some other personal and family matters to deal with, so they sent me out on the road alone for the time being. But again, we're really proud of this program. We're grateful for the partnership that we've had with the town of Whitman and with our other member communities. As we've talked about often when we did CARES, there was some consternation about the county's ability to effectively execute the CARES Act program. I won't go back into that history, but we did it quicker, cheaper, and faster. And we've also done it, we've done ARPA so far quicker, cheaper, and more effectively. Again, we're currently averaging 1% administrative cost. For ARPA, the national average is 7% to 10%. And lastly, Congressman Lynch has been joining us. He does sense his regrets. He couldn't be here this evening. He had to go to Congress. But he has obviously pointed out, with the national perspective, Plymouth County's performance. So with that, I would just like to ask Senator Brady if he'd like to say a few words, and then we'll have Rep. Sullivan Almeida.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And I will convey what the Commissioner stated. The Plymouth County delegation did a much better job getting the money expeditiously implemented into Plymouth County. I know that the administration at the state level at the time didn't want the county to control the money. And I supported it, and then Rep. Sullivan did as well. And they've done a much better job getting the money implemented in the state. And thank you to our town administrator and our select board members. You've been great working together with both Rep. Sullivan and myself. And these funds, not only the ARPA funds, but the other CARES Act was so important, getting distributed into the city of Blackton, the towns of Plymouth County. And they've done a great job. And any help we can be moving forward, please don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will be brief, as you know. I have Alina with me. I apologize, but my husband's at work. So this is what happens when you have an eight-month-old, right? But I just want to thank you guys, you know, for your hard work. I know it's not easy trying to find ways to, initiatives to use the money for. And I think this is going to be a great thing for the town. I think I see constantly on Facebook how many times an ambulance is not in our district or in our town and that it's out, whether it be out of service and/or out at calls or at the hospital. So I think this is going to be a tremendous impact for both the residents as a whole. So I want to thank the chief and everyone that has a part and parcel on getting the funds. And I'm very disappointed because I was finding, trying to find more ways to spend more money. But unfortunately, we've reached that cap. So we'll, fingers crossed that we'll get more money at some point and that we can really get things here to the town. So thank you, and thank you to the Commissioner as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. And I will convey Rep. Sullivan Almeida was texting me today looking for those funds. And Senator Brady is constantly in contact. And we're very, we're very lucky to have a great team for the town of Whitman. Rep. Sullivan Almeida, Senator Brady, as well as the federal delegation are always in contact with myself, with my fellow commissioners, with the treasurer's office. It really is a great team effort. And I think it demonstrates what multiple levels of government can do when we work together, which is to execute these types of funds for, for the people that we're all elected to represent and serve. So that's it for me. I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if you or any other, any other members have any questions or comments that they'd like to, they'd like to convey?
No, no, just, just, thank you. Yeah, and I'd like to convey the fact that, yes, Plymouth County is doing a much better job than the state would have ever done. I mean, we, you know your county. You know what it takes. You know who you need to contact. And we just work so close together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Want to give the check to the chief right now?
Sure. Yeah, we got the big check.
Sure, we want to kind of go behind you guys?
Again?
Stand. Do we stand or sit? Some sit, we won't stand or back.
Can I move the chair again? That idea?
I'd like to thank your town clerk. I had an emergency with this, and it smudged. So thankfully, she had a dry erase mark.
Yeah, we'll put it right there. We'll put it in front like the last time.
Sure.
We just change that to whatever we want?
Yeah, you can.
It's a race.
Oh, yeah. It was a race when I walked in, too, but thankfully.
Young lady up front.
All right, everybody. Ready?
Alina, look.
On the peek-a-boo works on the both for photos.
Oh, yeah. Alina just says hi, and then they go.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Good, things are very good.
They had a meeting.
A lot to say. A lot to say.
Thank you so very much.
Oh, yeah. Start looking at safety issues.
Right. Right.
So we're going to be taking up Thursday and September.
By next week, it ought to be over, you think?
Expediting all the readings, all along the way.
Does he want that in his fire station? Yeah, chief, you want that in your fire station?
Read your letter now? I could, if you want. I was gonna, I was gonna do it when Mary Beth, Mary Beth is going to give like a running commentary on what happened. No, 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 that's okay.
That's why we have a bedtime, too.
Mine might be earlier than hers.
Yeah, I called him today.
I didn't know.
Yeah, so we're going to have a meeting with him, probably Mary Beth and myself, after ten a.m.
And I do want to sign your papers. Oh, can I sign them? Or come to you?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it sounds like his client might be a good fit. Thank you.
Let me, don't let me forget what it says.
This is for Allison Sullivan. It's for her.
I signed it.
Did you sign it, Mary Beth? It's for Allison.
Me down there, the Democrat.
Okay, we ready to, ready to resume, are we? Okay. Actually, that wasn't.
Thank you. It's not next. That's not next on the agenda.
No, I know it's not. Okay, the next, next on the agenda is actually the chairman's report. And I have, I have a letter that I want to read a little later, but it's involved with some things that Mary Beth is going to talk about in her, in her report. So I'll wait, I'll put my, my report up and go to get to you at the end. Budget update is the next thing? Do you have something you'd like to say?
If I may. At last night's Whitman Hanson Regional School District School Committee meeting, a vote was taken to certify the operating assessment for the town of Whitman at 7.87%, which is down from the original 11.03% increase in assessment voted previously. Thursday, April 11th, the Board of Selectmen will hold a meeting via Zoom at 12:30 PM to vote the ballot question pertaining to the override article being placed on the warrant at the annual town election. Placed on the warrant and at the annual town election. The amount of the override will be $509,212, which represents the amount over the 5% the town has budgeted in Article 2 for fiscal year 2025. The taxpayer impact on the $509,212 for an average home assessment of $470,190 is $95.38. And that is based on the fiscal '24 valuations. So that's the update.
Anyone have any questions?
Is that a year or not?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is. New business. Act on the License Renewals for the Following License Holders for the period May 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025, subject to the submission of renewal paperwork, renewal fees, and current tax status. And they include fuel storage licenses from the Whitman burial vault, water town engineering at 1200 Auburn Street. That's the first one, all the way down to the MKPM within the LLC.
Wait the reading?
DBA New World, 359 Pepper Street. I'm just, I'm not going to read all of these. And then, we're also going to vote on junk collector's licenses, junk dealers' licenses, and pool table licenses. Would someone like to make a motion to vote on all of those?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next item is to act on the request of Tina Willett, Whitman Food Pantry, Food Drive Coordinator, to advertise the May 11th, 2024 Whitman Food Pantry Drive in the following manner: by placing lawn signs on town property and at each corner in the center of town from May 5th through May 11th, 2024; by posting information on the sign outside Town Hall; by holding signs at Whitman Center on Friday, May 10th, 2024, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM; and by a reverse 9/11 call to Whitman Residence on May 9th or May 10th, 2024. Zero motion.
So moved.
Second.
Zero, second. All those in favor of allowing that to happen? Finally, acting on the request of Mimi's Closet Boutique, Michelle Allen, for a one-day liquor license on the premises located at 83 South Avenue for a Mother's Day shopping event, Mimosa Sunday, on April 28th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Zero motion to? Okay, then.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, ten o'clock in the morning, huh?
And now, it is time for the town administrator's report.
Okay.
And before we get into that, I'd like to read a letter that, that the town administrator received, and I received a copy of on April 2nd, 2024. And that is a letter from Allison Almeida, Representative Allison Sullivan Almeida. And it deals with some things that have been happening in town, and I think it's important for, for you all to hear what she had to say. And then, Mary Beth is going to amplify, amplify that. She wrote it to Town Administrator Carter with respect to Senate Bill 2698, an act validating the results of the annual election held in the town of Whitman on May 20th, 2023. "I hope this letter finds you and your family well. I want to provide an update to you." This is dated April 2nd, since our, since our last meeting. Update to you regarding 2698, S2698. On March 7th, S2698 was filed by Governor Maury Healy and was quickly referred to the Joint Committee on Election Laws. On March 7th, it was filed by Governor Healy. On March 11th, 2024, the Joint Committee scheduled a hearing for written testimony. My office sent a letter of support asking for a favorable vote. On March 28th, the bill was reported out favorably by election laws and sent to the Committee on the House Steering Policy and Scheduling. Yesterday, April 1st, the Committee on House Steering Policy and Scheduling reported that the matter be placed on the orders of the day for the next sitting of the House of Representatives. I have reached out to the chairperson of third reading, Chairman Walsh, to bring his attention, to his attention, the importance of getting this legislation to the House floor for a vote. I am hopeful that the bill will be voted favorably by the, by the House by April 3rd. After the House votes favorably, the bill should, would then go to the Senate. I would also like to correct, and this is the important part of the letter as far as I'm concerned. I would also like to correct the record regarding recent comments by some of the members of the Whitman's Finance Committee, incorrectly claiming that I had incorrectly filed this bill incorrectly. The original legislation, S2516, an act validating the results of the annual election held in the town of Whitman on May 20th, 2023, was filed in the Senate by Senator Brady and was not filed by me. To be clear, both Senator Brady and I understood the request as for a home rule petition that could be filed by either of us. When Senator Brady filed it, we both believed it was filed correctly. The petition was originally filed by Senator Brady as S2516 on November 30th. On December 1st, S2516 was referred to the Committee on Election Laws, and the House concurred. It was not until February 8th that the bill reached the Committee on House Steering Policy and Scheduling, and then February 15th was placed in the orders of the day for the next sitting. During a formal session on February 28th, Chairman Walsh, the chair of third reading, informed me that S2516 needed to be filed by the governor and voted on by both the House and the Senate. After receiving this information, I quickly notified both Senator Brady and, as you know, advised the town. After being made aware that the petition needed to be filed by the governor, Senator Brady and I quickly reached out to Governor Healy's office for their assistance in getting the special legislation filed. I want to thank Governor Healy's office for being so attentive to this matter and getting the bill filed in a timely manner. I also want to thank and credit you, Mary, Mary Beth, for being so proactive in reaching out to my office, Senator Brady's office, and making yourself available to the governor's office to get this legislation filed as quickly as possible. Within several days, Senator Brady and I were able to have the governor's office refile the home rule amendment. It's now S2698. And we will continue to provide, to provide you with weekly updates. Important thing is that the governor actually filed S2698, I believe, in the morning of the 7th of March. That is the day after, on March 6th, that our Finance Committee voted to send a letter to the governor asking for, for action. And it's kind of suggesting that action was belated and whatever. They voted on March 6th in the evening. Governor Healy sent S2698 over to the Senate on the morning of March 7th. I'm not sure how they could have received the letter by then. But that's, that's a whole, that's a whole other thing. The fact of the matter is, is that Representative Sullivan Almeida and, and Senator Brady have worked diligently on this since they knew what had to happen. And Mary Alice, I mean, Mary Beth, Mary Alice. Because Mary Alice. Mary, Mary Beth is going to fill in a little more information. But I just want to make it clear that we have had unbelievable service from both our senator and, and our representative. Representative Sullivan Almeida has been incredible in the way that she has given us information on a, on a timely basis and, and pushing to get this done. It isn't quite done. It's going to be done, hopefully, in about a week. Everything will have happened. But Mary, Mary Beth, Mary Alice. I must have Mary Alice Kirby on.
I know, so I'm thinking.
Something going on. Funny, yesterday, we were watching the total eclipse of the sun out in the backyard. And so I took, my, my wife was sitting in a chair with the glasses on, and she had a glass of wine in her hand. And I thought it'd be funny to take a picture. So I took a picture. On my phone, when I saw the picture, there was like a halo around her. She was totally surrounded by this vortex-y kind of thing. And now I'm thinking of Mary Alice. So I don't know what's, what's happening, what's happening in my world right now. But thankfully, to these two guys right here, Senator Brady and Representative Sullivan Almeida, we may be seeing an ending to this, this special legislation deal. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm so hopeful that we will see that next week. That would be fantastic. And I don't want to reiterate everything you said, but I just want to give a brief timeline of where we are right now. So the town was informed by bond counsel the special legislation was needed to validate the results of the annual town election held on, in the town of Whitman on May 20th, 2023, in order to receive what's referred to as a green light letter, which allows the town to proceed with borrowing for the DPW building. A special town meeting was held on October 30th, 2023, which included additional funding for the new DPW building. Once that was done, on October 31st, I emailed and also sent by regular mail to both our state Representative Allison Sullivan and our Senator Michael Brady, a letter with corresponding backup pertaining to our special legislation request. The letter formally asked for their assistance in forwarding requests to the governor's office for Governor Healy to file on the town's behalf, validating legislation to ratify the actions by the town at the May 20th, 2023 annual town election. Senate Bill S2516 was filed in November. The bill was engrossed by the Senate on February 8th, and it wasn't until the third reading of the House on February 28th that it was realized that Bill S2516 needed to be filed by the governor. The bill was thought to have been a home rule petition, which could have been filed by either the House or the Senate. However, it was actually a home rule amendment and not a home rule petition, and therefore, it needed to be filed by the governor instead. On March 7th, the new bill, S2698, was filed by the governor's office. And as of yesterday, the bill was engrossed by the House and is currently in the Senate. It is my understanding that Bill S2698 will be taken up in the next session, which is scheduled for this Thursday. And hopefully, will be engrossed by the Senate on that date. I've been in constant contact I've been in constant contact with State Representative Allison Sullivan's office throughout this entire process. I've sent and received numerous emails and I've received several telephone calls from both Allison Sullivan and her aide Catherine Mullen. They have always been accessible and extremely responsive to every inquiry I have made over the past several months. I have also reached out to the Office of Senator Brady several times regarding the special legislation request and have also worked with them very well to keep abreast of the progress on this bill. I will continue to work with State Rep. Allison Sullivan and State Senator Michael Brady until this bill is enacted and signed by the Governor, which, as I stated, I hope will be very soon. So we're getting there, almost there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
And you have more in your report, don't you?
I do, if that's okay, if I may.
Please carry on.
So the next item is just an update on the fiscal 2024 personal property assessment valuation issue that I had mentioned at our last meeting. Last Thursday, April 4th, the following people met with Brian Kent, the Field Inspector from the Town's appraisal vendor, Patriot Properties Catalyst, to review the fiscal 24 personal property assessment valuations. In attendance were Justin Evans Selectman, myself, Town Administrator, and Kathy Keefe, the Assistant Town Administrator, John Noska, the Board of Assessor Chairman, Wendy Jones, the Principal Assessor, and Joshua McNeil, Director of Technology. The Field Inspector reviewed several personal property record cards with the town to analyze any anomalies. The town is currently working with both our vendor and our IT department to properly identify the issue and possible cause. I will continue to update the board as we learn more. So just a little update on that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I have one other update, and this is concerning the MBTA 3A TA project. And it's, right now, we do have a draft warrant article to move forward with town meeting, but I do want to just give a little update. A public hearing was held last night by the Whitman Planning Board in the Town Hall Auditorium to discuss and consider a proposed amendment to the town's protective zoning bylaw. Judy Barrett from the Barrett Planning Group outlined the parameters under which the zoning amendments adhere to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A, Compliance Guidelines of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. The Planning Board is voting tonight to put forth this amendment for a vote at the upcoming annual town meeting or to submit the proposed amendment to the Office of the Attorney General for prior approval or possible revision before putting it before town meeting. This would take several months, and so it would need to go before a special town meeting in the fall. The deadline for compliance is December 31st, 2024. So the draft language did go before a town council, and Nancy Campani came back with several revisions, which were forwarded to the Planning Board, and I believe Judy Barrett has incorporated those into the draft. However, in speaking with the attorney, we were weighing out, a lot of towns, you know, are dealing with this right now, and whether or not it's best to put forth the article and get approval from the state before we vote it. Some towns have voted the article, sent it to the state, and then had issues. So I think that that's what's being considered by the Planning Board this evening. But this is something that we definitely want to put forth at a meeting, either the annual town meeting or a special town meeting in the fall, because the deadline is December 31st. And I don't know, Justin, if you wanted to speak on that at all.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, so the, and unfortunately I missed the public hearing last night, but my understanding right now is that our consultant, Judy Barrett, who we brought in to draft this bylaw, does believe that we will be in compliance with this proposed bylaw. Some of the minor amendments that they made even as late as yesterday are to reduce the frontage required within the zone to 40 feet to be more aligned with the properties that already exist within that bylaw. That's something that the Attorney General has specifically called out. As you know, you can't require 100 feet if some of the properties are only 30 feet from the road. Like, it's not what exists in the district. So that, that was a recent change. In, on Town Council's advice, her suggestion to send it to the state. I know the town of Abington did send it to the state in advance of their town meeting last week. They did not hear anything back, so they voted it as is, and they will eventually get feedback from the state. You know, in my opinion, we don't currently have a special town meeting scheduled for the fall. I don't particularly like the idea of calling it for one, one issue, when, as we've seen in the past with zoning amendments that town meeting has approved, the marijuana one comes to mind. There was one small component of our marijuana bylaw that was not allowed by the Attorney General's office, and what happened was that they struck that small provision. I don't remember what it was. It was pretty non-consequential. So I think the downside of putting forward an amendment that is not pre-approved, or a zoning bylaw that's not pre-approved by the state would be striking small components of it. And then if that were to happen, we would either need a special town meeting in the fall to fix it if it was something that took us out of compliance, or if it's something that didn't necessarily fall in line with what the town had intended, we could amend it at next year's annual town meeting. I think that, given that we don't currently have a special town meeting planned for the fall, that would be the course of action I would recommend, but it is a decision for the board whether or not we would like to, you know, we have until December 31st to comply. We just don't have another town meeting planned, so. I don't know if anybody else has.
Anybody else in my guest shot?
I agree with Justin. I like the project. I like a number of the components connected to the project. I think talking about it at, at the town meeting would be helpful, I think, in many ways. And, and the downfall, like Justin said, is relatively minor, you know, for, for, for doing it now as opposed to waiting, so.
So since we just received Nancy's revisions, and I know they've been incorporated, Judy Barrett into the bylaw, I will update the article that we currently have in draft form, and then I'll be able to send that out. I plan on sending all the articles out in the next day or so, so the board can review those before our April 23rd vote next meeting when I.
Yeah, today, we, I had a MBTA Advisory Board meeting, and Mr. Ng, the MBTA General Manager, and one of the things that I brought to him is the fact that because towns are voting in this MBTA housing area, that safety issues need to be addressed, with more, maybe more walkers or whatever. So he said they'd look into it and put it on the agenda and make sure that, they put out something that will teach residents the safety issues of what the gate's coming down and not to go by the gates and things like that. But he'll be looking into it and he'll come up with some type of a program for safety issues on this issue. Yes.
I know Abington has had very close communications with the MBTA around the safety guidelines around the trains. So if you want, I can always facilitate that conversation with you guys. I know our Public Health Nurse Lindsay Wright over in Abington, who's actually a Whitman resident, has integrated into the schools and really educated the students around train safety, because I think back in the day, we used to have that. And then unfortunately, I think we've kind of lost our way because trains have been so prevalent in our community. You just automatically assume people know the safety of it. So I'd reach out to her, because I know she's been able to really advocate for signage around mental health, suicidal thoughts, and then also educate our, our community in Abington regarding the safety of trains. So that's just a suggestion to you guys, and I'd be more than happy to connect wherever I need to connect.
Now, the issue that I brought forward to General Manager is the fact that our train stops at the station. The gates are down. They're unloading, unloading passengers. And I've seen people on bicycles going around the gates and across the track. God forbid, they fall over on the track and they get hurt and the train's going. So I mean, people need to be educated that those gates coming down mean something. And he's also going to look into the fact that how long the gates stay down. If the train's going to be there for five minutes and the gates are down for five minutes, it irritates drivers and they, or people, and they go around them. But what they don't understand, there could be a train coming in the opposite way, and that's why the gates are down. Right? So I mean, it's just educating the, the public, especially when there'll be more housing towards, near the MBTA stations.
That's everything I have.
You're done.
I'm done.
Very good. You know, I'd be, while I was, while I was listening to you, I, I think I'd be remiss if you didn't say, I didn't amplify what you said about during the budget update about the school committee meeting last night. You have to be really pleased with the way that Stafford especially managed that meeting. And we received a very positive vote from the schools in cooperation with the things of Whitman saying.
I think it's wonderful. It shows collaboration, and we can go into town meeting unified, and I think that's great.
Last item on the agenda.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
If you would have allowed us a moment to, to thank you guys and our Town Administrator here in Whitman for the due diligence that she's done on getting this legislation moving forward. I think she is very, being very modest over there on the, how much this has affected her and how much her blood, sweat, and tears have gone into getting this done. We have been in constant contact. I think we both have lost sleep over this, this, you know, this legislation. And she's been tremendous, and I hope the town realizes how much she goes to bat for all the residents in the town of Whitman.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman as well, I want to convey what Rep. Sullivan said. I also submit a letter, almost conveying what she has written about the timeline. And it's unfortunate that things had to go, the process did, but it did pass the House, and it's coming before the Senate this coming Thursday. I've talked to the Senate President's Office and Mark Daly, who's the liaison for the Senate President's Office. So in moving forward, anything that comes up, please don't hesitate to contact us. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Select Board, and especially our Town Administrator. Very much, guys. Well, thank you for your work.
Can I speak with the Speaker's Office? And as long as it gets engrossed on the, on the Senate side, it'll be enacted hopefully by the earliest of Tuesday of next week, if not the latest by Thursday. So the hope is, is thoughts and prayers for that it's Tuesday and that we can get it really going so that you just can put the project going, so.
Thank you very much.
Allison, are you being called outside?
Have a good night.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the DPW Commissioners with respect to the South Avenue Reconstruction Project. I know it's not the whole board, but.
Yeah, we had a few.
We needed to. We needed to say, say joint meeting, just in case anybody else showed up.
I understand. I guess before we start this, I'd kind of, whatever we're saying about Mary Beth and her efforts, and certainly our Senator and Representative on getting the article pushed through for the DPW building. And I've spoken to Mary Beth numerous times about it, and certainly appreciate all of her efforts that she's done and anyone else involved in getting that pushed through, so. So today, we're here with Jim Fitzgerald from Environmental Partners. Just to give you a quick update, I think probably two years ago, we started talking about a project on South Ave, a Mast dot tip project, which, you know, Mast dot would fund and manage, and the town would just fund the engineering side of it. It's a multi-year process. The good news is we were accepted and approved to continue the process with Mast dot. And, you know, we do have an article coming up on the town meeting to continue funding that engineering and design. And we just wanted to share with the board kind of where we're at, what's the next steps and the timeline, so. Turn it over to Jim.
Welcome.
Yep, welcome.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Jim Fitzgerald with Environmental Partners. I'm joined by Benny Hung, who's also with Environmental Partners. So we're here to talk about the improvements along South Avenue. So just kind of looking back as far as where have we been and where are we now? The project was discussed several years ago, and there's been a series of meetings with DPW, DPW Board of Commissioners. We're here in front of the Board of Selectmen before proceeding with the project initiation process with Mast DOT. With that included, including descriptions of the project, its many merits, providing some data. We also met with Mast DOT to introduce the project to them, and they were very supportive of the project and what it stands for. From there, the project went to Project Review Committee, or PRC, where it was approved, as mentioned, which is great news. So advancing in the tip process. And here we are tonight to just provide an update as far as where we're at and what the next steps are. So I'm just going to go through some background slides real quick. These are similar to the ones that many of you have seen before. The project limits extend along South Avenue from Commercial Street to Plymouth Street, a distance of approximately one mile. It's really focused on providing multimodal accommodations that are safe and comfortable for all users, whether they be motorists, walkers, bikers, or transit users. And this slide here depicts the different land uses in the area. Certainly on the, on the right side or the eastern side of the slide towards Plymouth Street, the area shown in blue are residential land uses. Of course, a lot of residential development surrounding this area as well. On the western side, some commercial land uses that we're trying to provide connections to. We're looking to provide safe, comfortable accommodations for different destinations. Of course, the commuter rail station being located right alongside the project is, is pretty important. And all sorts of connections to different areas of town via the side streets that connect to South Avenue, pedestrian connections along Colebrook to get towards Memorial Field, et cetera, as well as provide accommodations directly along South Avenue that can, can be comfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as the motorists traveling at the proper travel speeds. So we know, obviously, a lot of residential development surrounding this area, but when, when you think about the, the ease of walking or the, the close distance between residential neighborhoods and the commuter rail station, for instance, it's really, there are really a lot of benefits that could be had from this project. These two circles depict a 1,000-foot and a 2,000-foot radius from, from the commuter rail station. And just that area alone captures a number of residential neighborhoods, certainly very comfortable for a short distance for walking and biking, and then some. Likewise, we drew these circles surrounding Devol Elementary School as well, again capturing a lot of residential neighborhoods. The project also stands to really address or improve or allow for redevelopment in the area. The fact that the commuter rail station is, is right there really is a wonderful asset for the community if you could walk or bike to it as well as drive to it. And so all sorts of opportunities for redevelopment in the area that this project would support. Looking at safety along the corridor, we find that there are a few areas along the corridor where there are significant amount of crashes that have occurred. For instance, right adjacent to the, the train tracks by the commuter rail station, falls within the top 5% of statewide crashes. And then there are other segments shown in yellow where, where there are a significant percentage of crashes related to injuries. And certainly the intersection of South Avenue at Franklin Street and Pleasant Street is one that could, could stand to have some improvements made to it. As you all know, instead of having a single intersection, we're faced with three, where we are creating additional conflict points, a lot of skewed maneuvers where people have to look over their shoulder to see oncoming vehicles, a lot of excessive pavement within intersections. As you can see here from some of these photos, just the fields of asphalt that result. Excessive pavement allows for faster travel speeds and uncontrolled channelization of motorists. What this equates to for pedestrians is excessively long crossing distances. So for instance, on the northern Pleasant Street leg to South Avenue, we've got a crosswalk that's 100 feet long. That's, that's pretty substantial to leave a pedestrian exposed to oncoming traffic. Very uncomfortable for pedestrians to make that crossing. Mentioned before about the skewed maneuvers where you have to look sharp over your shoulder to see oncoming traffic. Well, that's certainly the case here on this western mode of, node of the intersection, where vehicles coming down from Pleasant Street wanting to turn right onto South Avenue, it's barely a bearing right, really, really have to look sharp over their left shoulder to see oncoming motorists approaching. As I mentioned, it's, it's not comfortable for pedestrians to have such long crossing distances. And, and the significant amount of, of pavement that exists in, in this area really could be put to better use. It really increases the amount of stormwater that's collected within the roadway and, again, just not a, an efficient use of space here. So what is the vision for the corridor? It's one that balances all the different needs. We're looking to really provide continuous and comfortable accommodations for bikes, pedestrians, and motorists, as well as transit users, and trying to link it all together, you know, allow for, for people to walk or bike to the train station, for instance, from their, from their home. We're, we're looking to improve safety, promoting traffic to travel through efficiently as it currently does, but making sure that the motorists are traveling at, at a safe travel speed and have visual alerts as far as where there could be a pedestrian crossing or cyclist in the roadway. The project in general would over, invigorate the local economy in that area. Complete Streets projects have been proven to really provide a boost with local economies and allow for redevelopment with all the placemaking opportunities that could be had with a project like this. Just really coming down to balance between all the different needs, using the right-of-way space as efficiently as possible for really a pleasant outcome and for the community. So we have looked at some additional concepts since we last spoke, really to get through the project initiation phase of, of. the project initiation phase of the tip process. So, the concepts have been updated and revised. So, if we kind of zoom in a little bit and take a closer look. So, here's a snapshot of the existing conditions down by the train tracks, commuter rail station, and here is... Here are some of the improvements that we were looking at getting us through the project initiation process, at least. So, what we're looking at is our on-street bicycle lanes with location... Areas of on-street parking. We are looking at curb extensions or bumpouts at crossing areas. This helps provide that feeling of tightening so that motorists travel at a slower travel speed, but also it allows for pedestrians to cross the street or be able to see oncoming motorists around parked on-street vehicles. There are a number of alternatives that we had considered in the earlier project initiation phase, including this one here, which is the one that was ultimately drafted out on plan. What this includes, again, includes one travel lane in each direction, an on-street bicycle lane in each direction, and then sidewalks on both sides, using... Allowing for a green buffer either on one side of the street or both sides of the street. This could allow for some tree plantings as well, trying to reduce the impervious surface a bit. Another alternative that we had looked at was the notion of buffered bicycle lanes. A buffered bicycle lane is something that separates the bicycle by a striped buffer. The bicycle is... The only thing that this provides is striping within the roadway. It's typically about two feet of striping. It just provides that extra little clearance between the motorist and cyclist to make it a little bit more comfortable. Because of the additional space that would be required, however, this would impact the amount of green space that we have on the sidelines, whether there'd be a grass strip or trees. And lastly, we looked at the notion of separated bicycle lanes, which are bicycle lanes that have some sort of physical separation from the motorists. So, in this instance, these are raised separated bike lanes. They're at the height of the sidewalk, so it provides that feeling of roadway narrowing a bit more, helping to slow travel speeds by motorists, but it also provides a space that's comfortable for any user, any type of cyclist, regardless of age, to bike along South Avenue. There's typically some sort of a narrow buffer between the bicycle lane and the sidewalk since they are at the same height, and so this is another option that we were considering. Ultimately, the preferred alternative is something that will be worked out with the group as a whole in advancing the project to the next stage, which is the pre-25% design stage. At that point, we would need to vet out the options and proceed with one that the town prefers. So, the intersection of South Ave and Pleasant Street, here's the existing where we have the building isolated in the center of an intersection. And here's an idea that we were... Had drawn up again for the project initiation process. It includes converting the three intersections into one conventional intersection so that motorists, as they are traveling from Pleasant Street, they travel to the main intersection itself. They no longer veer to the right and fly through. They actually have to approach a conventional, more perpendicular intersection. The remaining area where that bypass road is currently located behind the former fire station would be used as access to the businesses and to parking. We would also be able to, with this idea, be able to increase the green space quite a bit as a result. So, again, this is a concept that we had drafted up for the project initiation phase. Little bit about TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. It is a five-year program, so there's a... The design is funded by the town, but the construction is paid for by the state. The town is also responsible for any right-of-way that's necessary also. Because of the Mast DOT submission process, it does take multiple years to proceed, and again, it's a five-year program regardless. And to our knowledge, Whitman has not received any TIP funds in the recent past, at least. So, prime candidate.
Complete Streets.
So, what might the timeline for this project be? So, this is a potential timeline. By no means is this firm... This is just an estimate of what could be. The years are denoted in black text. As you can see, it's multiple years. It is a five-year program. So, right now, we are advancing into the pre-25% design phase, and then we would anticipate that being completed within a year's time or so and submitted for a review by Mast DOT. From then, it gets into submission... Preparation of the 25% design phase. So, between the pre-25% and the 25% phases, that makes up a substantial amount of the submission process despite the percentage title. It's typically at least 50% of the design efforts take place with that. From there, it advances... The project advances into the 75% design phase where there's more detail provided, refinements per Mast DOT comments, onto the 100%, and the final planned spec and estimate phase before it would ultimately go out to bid by Mast DOT and the construction handled by Mast DOT. So, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much. I could almost see my house in some... I travel those roads a lot, and I'm really thankful for what you're envisioning, to tell you the truth. Although, we'll have to come down Pleasant Street now. You're right, that is a hard... When you're taking that right.
You're looking over your left shoulder, right?
Exactly, exactly.
It is rough.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
You can go first, we've got a couple.
Okay. I don't know. Has it been voted on a TIP program? I'm Vice Chair of the Joint Transportation of O'Callaghan Plan Council.
Yeah.
I'm also signatory for MPO.
Yep.
For the towns. I haven't yet seen it on the J... On the TIP program. Is it?
It's not... It has not been assigned a TIP year yet, no. It has not. Traditionally, the project is usually gets to the... Gets a TIP year when it's further along in the process, like after the 25%.
Right, when it's around 25%.
After the 25%, correct.
Yeah. When do you expect that to happen? So, I can push for it.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. So, I mean, looking at this, again, don't hold me to it, but this is just one scenario. We would anticipate the pre-25% design going in and being approved by April 2025, and perhaps the 25% design completed by... Completed and approved by April 2027. Now, that can certainly be expedited. The one thing with TIP is it is a five-year program, but as I'm sure you're aware, sometimes there are delays in projects, and that's where other projects can sometimes slip in.
Right, we flip it over, yeah.
Yeah. So, this is based on it being a five-year program. It's also based on the fact that the design funds have yet to be allocated for these efforts, and so we can split that out however the town sees fit, you know? So, this would allow for more town meetings to do it more gradually if that's more palatable.
Let's see if I can hear the tape.
Flexibility.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I like all of your plans, but does any of that affect the businesses that are existing there, your changes?
Only in a positive way. Only in a positive way. Really, what it would allow for is a setting that really lends itself to, almost like a little hub, you know, that people can walk and bike from their homes to get to, instead of just vehicles trying to fly through. A lot of times with transit stations, for instance, it's the issue of the last mile, right? That last mile of, well, I live near the train station, but I'm not going to walk or bike to the train station. Well, now you can with comfortable accommodations. That's kind of what it's all about. So, any sort of existing businesses that are there would certainly be not impacted by the design. That would be important. And during construction as well, it's one of the requirements to maintain access, or would be one of the requirements to maintain access to businesses and houses, residences as well, certainly.
And communicate with them and such.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, also, because the train station, as you said, so probably we'll be calling with MBTA and make sure we have a safer crosswalk crossing at train stations.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, just you mentioned about that, that would educate the people, they can see like how short it is called, the crossing distance, such that, so it will be definitely improvement at the center.
Yeah, it was kind of ironic that you were just talking about the MBTA community element of things, and this is addressing the safety issues along the corridor, providing those connections. And also, there will be, as Benny said, some involvement with MBTA, the fact that there are train tracks there, and what changes would be made to those tracks or whatever is to be determined, that's as deemed appropriate by Mast DOT for this project. So, it all kind of works together nicely.
Justin had a few questions.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no worries. If you wouldn't mind going to the slide that shows the residential commercial zone breakdown? I just wanted to kind of point out something that caught my eye.
Sure. Wait for it.
I think it was one of the initial ones.
That's further back, hold on. This one, the circles or the...
No, the zoning bubbles.
This one.
Right here.
This one.
So, kind of taking the larger view, we talked about the MBTA communities a few minutes ago. This commercial land use section is pretty close to an approximation of where we're looking at citing the MBTA Communities Compliance District. So, taking these two projects together, it is a total rethinking of East Whitman. This makes it a much more walkable community from, really, Colebrook Boulevard, which is already a community path, up to Route 58. So, I think, you know, absent a town planner who would kind of coordinate this kind of stuff, we have a couple of different committees working on a couple of different areas of this project, the Planning Board, the DPW Commissioners, and the Board of Selectmen's Office working on potential grant opportunities to kind of fund all of these projects. It's an important thing to highlight. I think I saw in the Mast DOT letter, the current project estimate is $14.8 million, thereabouts.
Yes.
Do you have an updated estimate?
We do not.
That's still the...
That would be the latest one. So, as part of the pre-25% phase, what we would be collecting would be a topographic survey so that we know exactly what we're dealing with, and then looking at how those kind of different scenarios, those three typical cross-sections that I showed, how they would play out, and ironing out what the best solution would be ultimately, the best one for the town. So, with that would allow us to be able to estimate more, like which one are we doing, and what are the impacts, and figuring all that out.
Okay. And then the design estimate is still roughly 10% of that, so...
The design estimate is typically 14%.
14%.
For a TIP project because of the submission process. Now, the other thing is that with the engineering, it's typically 14% of the construction cost. Now, the 14-point, whatever million you just referenced, includes extra...
Includes the design, or...
Yeah. That includes extra things like construction and, you know, so which construction number are we going off of here? That one's more the inflated one, to be honest with you.
Okay. So, if we're looking at, you know, the town appropriated about $200,000 at last year's town meeting, I think the request this year is a little over 300, 316 and change. Is this roughly a couple hundred thousand dollars every year until we get to that 100% is what we're looking at?
Possibly. I have not done the math to plan it out. I think it would depend on that last slide with the calendar, the schedule, and how far do you want to stretch it out? And then we can certainly provide some sort of estimate based on what the preference is for the duration of the process.
So, just to be clear, the town is responsible for 10% of this project, or 14%?
Yeah. The town is responsible for the engineering and any right-of-way that's necessary.
So, if it's a $14 million project, we'll be responsible for a little bit more than a million and a half total, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, yes. And I think with the... And that's assuming that the cross-sections that we showed really focus on staying within the right-of-way, and so that would obviously be our preference, depending on what your preference is, that we try to do that. So, the right-of-way is a responsibility of the town as well, if it goes beyond.
I just have one more question. Who makes the final decision of which of these choices you choose?
Well, the town is leading the charge with the design, and it's a town-owned road, but it's also a project going through the Mast DOT process, and they all will weigh in heavily. So, it's a matter of going through the options and hopefully everybody coming to the same conclusion of what is the best solution for this corridor. So, I think, to answer your question, I think it would be kind of a little bit of a give and take, but hopefully we all come to the same endpoint.
To be in compliance with everything.
With Mast DOT's expectations. They do have a very rigorous Complete Streets process, looking at the bikes, pedestrians, and transit. So, it's just about communication, and that's why when we were early in the process, we wanted to get Mast DOT's input and support on this and what it is that we are considering here. And so, great sign that they were very supportive. And it's important to also keep them in the process throughout to build that relationship so there aren't any surprises on either side.
Do you work regularly with them?
Yes.
Perfect.
Especially District Office.
Perfect.
I have one last question. To get this program under the TIP program, usually it needs a letter to O'Callaghan from either the Board of Selectmen or would it come from the Commissioners, where they're both elected, or both elected boards, to get this favorable under the TIP program?
Yeah.
Get the process started.
I would suggest the more... Honestly, the more support you can drum up, the better, right? So, I think that that would be great. I do... Again, the TIP, it doesn't typically get on the TIP until after the 25%, though, but there's always exceptions to the rule. There's always exceptions... I have recently been involved in a project, a TIP for another community, where it got on the TIP much earlier than I had anticipated, so never say never.
But it needs a letter from the town.
Yeah.
To get it on there, the project.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it comes from the Board of Selectmen or the Commissioners because they're elected officials, right? So, it's their...
I mean, I'd take Jim's advice, one from each.
Yeah, do both.
It's not like it could hurt anything.
Right.
You know, but...
I don't know what the law is or what the regulation is, but again, the more support, the better. So, that's what I'd say.
Thank you very much.
One quick, would you mind providing the slides to us? I know Dan was taking some pictures as we went along.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm already getting ahold of Charlie Kenyon.
Okay.
There you go. Tell him I said hi.
I just wanted to say how strong a project I think it is for aesthetically, you know, beautifying the East End. I grew up down the East End. We've done a lot of improvements around the Town Park, Park Ave, over by the police station, Whitman Center now, and I think the East End with some of the busy businesses down there and stuff, and the commuter rail, it needs to... It could look a lot nicer, you know? And I think this project would really dress it up and make it look nice, as long as being a lot, as far as in also being very safe, much safer.
Right. We East Siders are looking forward to something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I used to walk that path.
I just think it's so important that we continue to fund this each and every year so that we meet that goal.
Right, right. I don't see anything else on the agenda, so motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.